You see Gary sitting down in the hall with a camera or anything?
I do not.
No? All right. Yeah, it looks like Tim gets the scoop this morning. All right. Everybody ready? All right, let's call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order here at 10:01. All those who are able to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public here for comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? Seeing none, any additions to the agenda from the board?
None of our.
Okay, moving on to the meeting minutes, if they're okay, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held December 2nd.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting held on December 2nd. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Moving on to our resolutions, we have Resolution 20, adopting a fee schedule for the Tax Claim and Collection Departments. And here is Jen, one of our many department heads who runs two different departments at the same time.
Good morning.
Morning.
I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak with me today. I am here to request approval of Resolution 2025 regarding the fee adjustments for the Tax Claim Bureau and Tax Collections Office. These proposed increases reflect the rising costs of providing legal required services by the Tax Claim Bureau. Over the past few years, the expenses associated with the process, including postage, printing, certified mail requests, software, and administrative support have continued to rise. These increases reflect the rising costs of providing legal required services, especially notifying property owners of unpaid real estate taxes and the tax sale. In order to continue meeting state mandated requirements and to maintain the quality and timeliness of the services we provide, these fees adjustments may become necessary. The updated fees will allow us to maintain daily operations, meet statutory requirements, and continue to serve the taxpayers of Center County.
Great. Well, thank you, Jen. Appreciate that. Obviously, the county has lots of costs. As you mentioned, postage is up. Cost of literally just doing paperwork is up. If you want people to show up to work, you tend to have to pay them more at least most years. And that all adds up, and so appreciate you working on the fee schedules. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable.
Mr. Dershowitz.
Generally, what's the increase?
So what the increase is basically all on the Tax Claim Bureau side. Certified mailers, because we have to do multiple, about $5 for each of my certifications. It was on the average. I just increased everything $5.
So just a $5 increase across the board?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
And postage has gone up.
Some postage is going up. I mean, if we do a registered restricted, they're $33 just to send one. Sometimes I have to send two, but usually I'm around the $18 certified mailer. But every once in a while, and we don't usually hit them twice with those costs. It's a one-time cost and whatever the next step is, I don't charge them in addition.
That's a nice of you.
Seems reasonable.
Yes. All right, unless there's any other questions, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 20 of 2025.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 20 of 2025. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Moving on to contracts and authorizations. In our human services area, we have several. The first one is Faith with Adult Services on a very timely contract with the Department of Agriculture for the State Food Purchase Program Grant Agreement.
Yes, good morning. Now that the state budget has passed, we have received our allocation for fiscal year 2526. This is a very unique year. This is almost double increase than we've received in previous years. Our department was aware that this could happen, but we were just waiting to see where it landed, of course, once the budget was passed. So the reason for this is that there are multiple groups at the state level and other, like some of the larger, more regional nonprofits for food security, got together to look at the allocation formulas. And so what they've done now to determine the amount of money per county is they're looking at some of the benefits they always have, which include medical assistance, enrollment, SNAP, and unemployment. But they've now added FPL or federal poverty level, and they've given that a greater weight than the benefit information. And so because of our student population in particular, not to say we don't have poverty in Center County, but that certainly always jumps our numbers in census counts. That has over-doubled our allocation for food in Center County, which is really exciting. The trick is just now that we have six months to spend it. So we have been aware for about a year or so that this could happen, so we've been working on some potential partnerships. I'm not going to discuss who they could be now, but we're going to reach out now that we have that number. And like I said, we have a limited time to spend it, although I do feel pretty sure we can do it. We did it in the pandemic when money was kind of coming from the sky for food as well. So we'll make sure our pantries are nice and stocked, and they'll be all set for the holidays as well.
Great, and I believe this is one of those programs, Faith, where the food banks buy the food at substantial discounts as well?
Yes.
Yeah, so this one's a specialty pack.
Yeah, so SFPB is nice because although it's state-run, like whereas with our federal program, it's very specific type of surplus food you receive. This, they do have the buying power to work through either some of our local vendors. They can even shop at local grocery stores as long as the cost of the food is under or at a certain amount of money. So it does increase their buying power as well because of what they can purchase food for at places like Central PA Food Bank in particular. That's probably our biggest vendor.
Okay, well, we definitely appreciate the state and federal legislators and their staffs for changing the formulas so that we're now receiving at least a bit more money here in Center County. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, thanks. It's really timely because, you know, we're seeing increased need at our food banks, is what I've been hearing from everyone who's involved with our local food banks.
Absolutely.
There's been a lot more need, so it's good timing to receive this extra.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
Me hi, thank Senator Langerholtz for, we really appreciate this. This is going to be a big deal for us and for our citizens, so thank you for that. Thank you for putting this together.
Great, any questions from the press on this program? Tim's last chance to get the scoop here. No? All right.
I have one question. Is it true that BYU fans are sending us food to your food banks?
I saw it in the paper, just like you, but I don't have any good insider scoops. I'm personally just dealing with an Eagles lost headache right now. That's all I got. I'm done talking about football for a couple of days.
Do appreciate the donations from, I suppose, mostly the Utah area, which was great.
Fantastic, yeah. I'll move to add grant agreement with the Department of Agriculture to next week's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the grant agreement with the Department of Agriculture to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Faith. Am I looking for an email on this one, or is this just paper?
This is the email you received a couple of weeks ago where you were asking what it was, and we had you pull it up, and we saw it was the contract. So I believe this is going to consent next week, and then after that, you can just sign electronically. We should be good to go.
All right, Erin, if you'd make sure I get to that, these.
But yeah, if you have any questions, just reach out. We'll find it.
Emails aren't always easy. Thanks, Faith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I see Kathy's all ready to go with a contract addendum with the Center County Youth Service Bureau for additional funding.
Good morning. This should be our last addendum for 2425. It is contract addendum number three with the Center County Youth Service Bureau for just a few additional funds for their performance-based prevention services. The amount is $15,675. This raises their contract maximum from $681,835 to $697,510. Most of that is state funding from the Bureau of Drug and Alcohol Programs and the Department of Human Services, and brings their county match to $69,783, all of which is within our budget for 2025. And it is for the time period July 1st, 2024, through June 30th of 2025.
Great, well, thank you, Kathy, and the county definitely appreciates our partnership with the Center County Youth Service Bureau and the very generous businesses and citizens of Center County who donate additional funds so that the kiddos can have an even better level of services and support. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you.
It's all good?
Thanks. I'll move to add the contract addendum with Center County Youth Service Bureau to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract addendum with Center County Youth Services Bureau to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
And I see Dave is eager here to approve the in-kind purchase of three vehicles from Penn State University.
Yes, good morning. Thank you for having me. And I asked for consideration of approval of the in-kind purchase of three vehicles from Penn State University using the Penn State in-kind funds. The total cost for the three vehicles is $37,455, which includes the surcharge fee that we pay them. We have two 2017 Ford Explorers and a 2019 Chevrolet Impala. The Explorers, I'm relatively sure, are both going to go into the Sheriff Department and replace vehicles that have met their useful life. The Impala, I don't know if we have it designated yet, but we'll find a home for it for sure. We certainly can utilize that, so we had just asked for your consideration of approval for those three.
Great, well, Dave, thank you very much for staying on top of that, and I'm sure the deputies will appreciate the somewhat newer vehicles.
Yes, yes.
I know with all the paperwork they serve, there's a tendency to drive those SUVs into the ground.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, it seems like a good price for those Ford Explorers.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Dershowitz.
It's all good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll move to approve the in-kind purchase of three vehicles from Penn State University.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the in-kind purchase of three vehicles from Penn State University. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay. Motion carries, and you've got two more for us.
Yes, next I ask for consideration of the acceptance of our Public Transportation Capital Grant Agreement from Pendot for the purchase of replacement vehicles for our paratransit fleet. The grant fund total that is allotted is $472,680, with state funding being $12680 and federal funding $352,000. And that would be the grant agreement. And then if that's approved to move on, then we would ask for approval of a CoStarz contract with Coach and Equipment for the purchase of three 2026 E450 Ford Cutaway vans using the funds from the grant agreement. Each vehicle costing $139,214, with a total of $417,642. There is some excess funds available, and meeting with Pendot yesterday, they've authorized us to utilize some of those funds for, we have an emergency repair on one of our current paratransit vehicles, and also maybe the purchase of some office equipment and supplies for the Transportation Department as well. So to utilize what's the difference left.
Yeah, can you apply any of that for maintenance?
Yes, that's what part of it's for, yes, correct. We had a vehicle go down with an engine problem, and they authorized us to go ahead and replace it. It's easier to put the engine in and try to get another vehicle quickly because it takes about 10 months to get these vehicles, once we get the order placed, so, yeah.
All right, these type of vans, Dave, are kind of the medium-sized white ones with the wheelchair lift that can drive, what, roughly about 10 people?
Yeah, usually the seating capacity is 12 normally with all the seats folded down. The wheelchair capacity is up to four now, so, which is nice. It helps when you have a larger wheelchair, somebody that may be extended and have to lay down a little bit. The old days of putting two across the back and trying to get around them to tie them down is much nicer now with the newer stuff. So, yeah, it really helps, but most of them hold 12 people, and it's nice for trips when we take seniors on trips that we have that capacity, yeah.
Well, that's wonderful. We do appreciate the funding from the state and the federal government. As we've discussed, not only is the county providing transportation in an area larger than the state of Rhode Island, but we've now added some additional trips for Belfont Borough and for CADA for county clients heading to the Belfont area.
Yep.
So it's all wonderful. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, thanks. This is really helpful considering the cost of these vehicles that are so specialized and have such, you know, equipment that is really specific to this use.
Yeah, I think most folks would be shocked to know that those vans cost $140,000.
Yeah, unfortunately, the prices have escalated a fair amount, so... But we're fortunate statewide that Commonwealth is able to help continue to contribute to the purchase of these for all the agencies across the state. And we just keep hoping that that continues, you know, that's all of our hope going forward, for sure, yeah.
Thank the senator for that as well.
Absolutely, yes. Without the support of the legislature and the governor, we wouldn't have this funding possibly. So, yeah, we're blessed in Pennsylvania, in my opinion, for sure.
We do appreciate Pendot being flexible with the small excess there, allowing us to spend that on some other expenses.
Yes.
Questions from the press on this topic?
Okay.
All right, looks like we take a motion then.
I will move to add Transportation Items 2 and 3 to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion to add the Items 2 and 3 for transportation to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay. Motion carries, and we have a very small consent agenda today. Thank you, Dave.
I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And I believe we do have a check run now that we're receiving funding from the state.
We have a check run, and the checks that I would like to recognize today on our check run are checks to foster families who are providing care for children who are in the custody of the county. We're always looking for new foster families who are interested in opening their homes to children in our community. This helps keep kids close to home and minimizes disruption for them if we're able to find homes for them that are within Center County. And with the holidays coming up, I'd like to put in a plug for, if you're looking for somewhere to provide some holiday giving that will make a big difference. The Ethel Beaver Fund is housed within Center County's Children and Youth Services. You can go to the Children Youth Services website, and this fund provides... It's, what we're doing is we collect charitable donations, and it provides some extra funds for activities and needs of foster kids that are a little bit beyond routine. So these are, you know, when kids may need, you know, funds for school field trips or particular activities, or for families to do some extra fun things with their foster children that they might not be able to do otherwise. This really helps enrich the lives of foster children in our community. So that's the Ethel Beaver Fund, and it's on the Children Youth Services website.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. I've been giving you the Ethel Beaver Fund for the last several years. Any questions, Commissioner Dershowitz?
No, no, absolutely not.
Then with that, I'd move, we approve the check run dated December 5th.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated December 5th. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay. Motion carries. John, do we have an administrator's report today?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right, moving on to reports and announcements.
Do not have a voter, not yet.
No voters registration report, and then we did have something big that came in. Was that on Friday, Leslie, from the governor's release?
It was last week.
It was last week. The commissioners have been working very hard over the last three years to develop funding for the Eagle Creek subdivision. And we have Ray here from Center County Planning and Leslie from SEDOC. Why don't you take the side table here, and maybe somebody could grab one of the extra mics off the speaker stand.
Just grab that off that there. There you go.
There we go.
Perfect, thank you.
So if you could cover how the discretionary or competitive Community Development Block Grant Program works, why it's incredibly difficult to receive that funding, and why it was just so absolutely crucial to the 33 families of Eagle Creek to receive that big grant.
So, good morning, commissioners. I'm very excited just to be here and to kind of bring tidings of good cheer during this holiday season. It's a major win for Center County indeed. As you know, the Eagle Creek Sewer Project was recently awarded $1.2 million in CDBG competitive funding. And this project really addresses a critical infrastructure need in the Eagle Creek mobile home community. This community provides affordable housing for working families in the Bald Eagle Valley. The situation was the community's onsite wastewater treatment plant was aging and no longer met DEP requirements, so the solution was to connect Eagle Creek to the Mid Center County Authority's public sewer system. So the scope of this project, in a nutshell, really includes installing about 2,800 feet of forest main, adding a new pump station with a backup generator, backup power, and then, of course, abandoning the old treatment plant and reclaiming the site. So the total project cost is about $1.5 million. And without this grant funding, HOA fees would have risen nearly 279% for the 33 Eagle Creek residents, which is really unacceptable and unaffordable. So, as you know, Community Development Block Grant is a federally funded initiative that assists low-to-moder income communities by developing projects that really do improve quality of life. So, critical infrastructure projects such as water, sewer, streets. We also look at, you know, housing rehabilitation, social services, economic development, those types of projects. So just things that are, you know, higher needs in those lower-to-moder income communities. So, this, I think my understanding is there was only about $6 million statewide available in this competitive funding. And Eagle Creek was one of, I believe, five projects that was funded this year.
So highly competitive, 67 counties, five counties received funding. We definitely want to thank the legislators who wrote letters of support, including Congressman GT Thompson, Senators Chris Dush, Senator Wang Langerholt, and Pennsylvania Representative Paul Takeac. But in this case, it is pretty much the county that's done all the work. Ray, your staff did a lot of background research on this and a lot of support to SEDOC. If you could maybe give us your perspective.
Yeah, I mean, when you look, take a look at the actual subdivision of Eagle Creek, this goes back 25 years. And in front of me, I have a letter from DEP from back in 2000 where they mandated this development to get off of their package system. And once Mid Center got up to capacity, that they would join Mid Center. So now we're at that point where we finally have funding to help them do that. We had much support from the members of the HOA when we had our public hearing, probably back in last January. They attended, and we have letters of support from them as well. So, yeah, we've done some background work on that in many, many ways. So SEDOC's led this. They've been persistent. We were glad that they have been, and of course, the commissioners have been as well.
Yeah, this was absolutely crucial because I believe we're allowed three tries for a discretionary.
There are times to carry, what we said, right?
Yeah.
For months, we said it.
We were allowed three tries. This was the third try. If we didn't make it on this one, they weren't going to receive the funding. And I believe the estimate is $1.5 million to $1.8 million, and between the state announcement of $1.235 million, then the commissioner is allocating an entire year's worth of Community Development Block Grant money to a single project, which we don't normally do. That's another $281,264 after administrative costs. And I know their homeowners association's already kicked in at least $60,000.
That's right, yes. They've done a lot of sort of work behind the scenes in acquiring easements and rights of way and things of that nature, just so we could hit the ground running as soon as we had that additional funding, so.
So if we come in toward the lower end of the estimate, we might have most everything covered. If it comes in a bit over, well, you'll be hearing from us, Me Hi and all of the other staffs for the legislators, see if we can try to pick up some additional grants. But I know in addition to the affordable housing angle and assisting 33 low-to-moder income families, there's also an environmental aspect to this as well because now the affluent will be treated more thoroughly to raise point to modern standards. Commissioner Concepcion, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, just thank you to the work that SEDOC has done and Ray through the Planning Department. You know, this is really an example of like when we're talking about this issue of affordable housing, part of the issue is, you know, we need new affordable housing, but we have to maintain the affordable housing developments that we have currently. So this is, you know, a development where if we were to have lost this, you know, as a potential, you know, that would have been devastating for these families. So, yeah, really grateful to be able to keep this housing online and have this problem have a solution in the near future.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
Persistence. That's what this is really all about. You mentioned, you know, this is three times that we've swung for the fences. And thank you very much for finally making that homerun ball happen because this is huge. $1.2 million is a lot of allocation. I don't think most people appreciate how rare it is to get this competitive money. And it's only happened a few times before, and whatever you've done, and I know we went all in on our allocation, but at the end of the conversation, it was teamwork that made this happen. And I think the folks in the Bald Eagle Valley would be the better for it, so thank you for your amazing work.
It is a good example of how we really all work together to strengthen our communities and...
Thank you, Ray. Best to your staff.
And I think this shows really well, like the importance of the CDBG program in being able to provide for these needs that are, you know, when you have, whether it's water or sewer systems, the cost of one-time investment sometimes is so much greater than a local community can absorb themselves. So these CDBG programs really are critical for maintaining infrastructure for these, you know, once-in-a-generation kind of projects, so.
And to layer on Amber's comments, I think there's a lot of places we can spend this money. And I think Center County over the last many, probably many decades, has pretty much zeroed in on the fact that sewer and water infrastructure is critically important. And we see that demonstrated here, and again, thank you.
And I believe since this is mostly federal funding, we've got, what, about five more years of paperwork to push this across the finish line and make sure all the boxes get checked and pay all of the suppliers for all of the pipes and the digging.
It's not the fun part of the job by any means, but definitely important.
Yes, well, this is...
Let's enjoy the fun part.
This is the fun part. This is the fun part, where we're able to help 33 families stay in their homes. And as I remember, this one's a little bit of a different development because I believe the families actually own the land too?
They do.
I believe so, yes.
Yes, they do. Yeah, so it's real property.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's, you know, generational wealth that they're trying to build there, and, yeah.
Fantastic. Yes, it's wonderful. Questions from the press on this big win for Center County?
I knew you said you have a lot of paperwork left, but do we have like any sort of ballpark idea of what construction we're gonna do? I knew you said you have a lot of paperwork left, but do we have like any sort of ballpark idea of what construction is supposed to be?
Sure, I can explain that process a little bit. So right now, we are in the process of executing contracts and service agreements. And then my team at SEDOC will get started on the environmental review. That process can take up to 90 days, especially for a project of this nature. And once that is cleared, the engineers can go into final design. And really, I'm hoping to be out to bid by late spring, early summer. I believe that this construction was anticipated to take about 12 weeks for this project. It's a little complicated, so we're not sure exactly how long it will take. Some of it will be weather dependent and some other things. But I really, I really don't see a reason why this wouldn't be complete by the end of next year.
Great. Very good question.
Do you have any better indication of the future of CDBG funding?
I think that we start every year with $0 and hope for the best. And, you know, we really do need to rally the support for this important program. We had a lot of that last year. I know the administrative team at SEDOC spent some days down on Capitol Hill and met with legislators. And so that's just going to be even more important moving forward, I think. It's the advocacy and the support.
Yeah, I know in the first Trump administration, first year, and now second Trump administration, first year, there were very strong proposals to take the community development block grant program down to zero nationally. But I know especially Congressman Thompson has fought for that program and has made certain that it continues to be funded. And to Commissioner Durscham's point, there are something like, what, 31 water and sewer authorities in Center County, Ray?
Approximately, yeah.
Approximately. And most of them are in rural areas where to both Commissioners' points, the local residents can't afford capital improvements by themselves of this large size. So, super critical here in Center County.
We had success, it was quite a number of years ago down in, I think Madisonburg, got their, got their water system squared away through this program. So it's been effective.
Yes. I know we had a big project in Reiversburg, maybe about six years ago.
And we've done some in Aransburg and Woodward.
And Woodward.
Mostly small systems.
Coburn.
Coburn, just for the water storage tank, yep.
Yeah, these things last a long time, but they do eventually wear out. 50-year pipe lasts about 50 or 60 years under ideal conditions.
Technology never changes though, Ray.
Maybe to some extent it doesn't Steve, not this technology.
Well, water still flows downhill.
Yeah.
But I think everything else changes.
Additional questions from the press on this big win for Center County government and Center County residents? Both saving affordable housing and improving the environment at the same time. Great, well, thank you so much, everyone. Hopefully we got some good quotes in there, JJ. We'll see, all right, you got a thumbs up. John, do we have any executive sessions to report or hold? Thanks Ray and thanks Leslie, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Any executive sessions to report or hold, John?
None to hold, however, there is one to report. The Board met an executive session on December 4th from 1:30 PM to 3:01 PM to discuss personnel and legal matters.
Great, thanks John. The remainder of our public meeting schedule, next week, Tuesday the 16th, Board of Commissioners meeting at 10. And then on Thursday the 18th, Finance Committee meeting at 9 and Combined Salary Board and Board of Commissioners at 10. And then everybody's favorite, the Board of Assessment and Revision of Taxes at 2:30. I believe you chair that one Steve, right?
Can't get any more exciting than that.
Yeah, well, sometimes it is. Any additional questions from the press? Yes.
So as you all may know, the solar power purchase agreement is kind of ramping up a little bit in the sense that Prospect 14, the developer, has come forth to try to initiate renegotiation of the project to possibly being not financeable. I know that Greg Shively, the consultant, is going to go back and try to maybe do a little bit more negotiating with Prospect 14 to see if they can get an agreement that is, you know, cost-effective and cost-saving for the county. If they're not able to do that, I was just wondering what your stance would be on the solar power purchase agreement? Would you look to pull out of the agreement or just the thoughts on the current?
Well, I mean, that's a great summary Jacob. Center County government entered into this intergovernmental agreement with, I believe it's now nine other partners. I think our actual usage is about 1/20th of the electric usage. So by being part of a bigger group, we were negotiating for better pricing. And that's been our goal the entire time, is to save money on the county's electric bill. The solar array at the correctional facility has been tremendous, saving something in the ballpark of 6 to 8 million over the life of that project. And then with the rooftop solar at the Community Services Building, which was recently installed, since we are using a giant battery backup instead of a generator, our actual cost for that project was like negative half million dollars because it was cheaper than buying a medium-sized generator to run that building as our backup in case something were to happen to the Willow Bank. So our focus is still at this point on saving money. And so we'll see what comes back from the, for the current negotiations. Any other Commissioner want to add anything to that?
Actually, I, we have negotiated in good faith. I think we entered into this concept with our fellow municipalities with the understanding that we would be buying a fixed-price source of electricity, you know, for what, 15 years? So our idea was that we were trying to lock in at what we considered a good rate. That contract still stands to the best of my knowledge. And until somebody shows me what the proposed increases might be, I think we are in the situation where we need to, you know, to wait and see what those numbers look like. My personal feeling here is though, you know, a deal's a deal. So I would, I would hope that they would honor those prices, you know, with the contract that we signed. I know there have been some structural changes, but they would have to be demonstrated necessary for me to even consider having a conversation about anything other than what we've already negotiated and agreed to. But I think it's, I think at this point, it appears to me that Center County, even if this deal doesn't work, needs to negotiate another program for, you know, longer-term energy resource. Because I think we all know that with the cost of energy going up as it has in the past and probably with the increased need for data centers and everything else, energy costs are going to be in a flux for a while and we need to lock that down as quickly as possible. And hopefully this deal goes through. And if it doesn't, then we'll have conversations about what that looks like.
Yeah, and I'd also emphasize, we do have a contract in place. And, you know, our goal throughout this process has been both, you know, to save money on our energy bills as well as to reduce some of the volatility that you could see year over year with increasing energy prices and to have some predictability. You know, that, and we've, you know, pursued those goals throughout this. And one of the key benefits of working with this intergovernmental group has been that we were able to pool purchasing power to negotiate for rates that we would not have been able to negotiate on our own. So we'll see what happens. I think I just would again emphasize, we do have a contract in place.
Yeah, so, great question Jacob. Any additional questions from the press? No, well, great, thanks for coming, everyone. And unless there's anything else, we'll give the order. I think we could take a motion to adjourn at 10:38.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at 10:38. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, thanks everybody.